We'll have to get to, thank you. Look at that technology. We have, some of our folks have to get to a council meeting in our home city of Patterson, so we're going to make this as quick as we possibly can. Let me first do a quick roll call, please.
County Commissioners, County Commissioners Opter.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Best. Duffy. Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
And Fraila LaZara is on his way, and I'm going to turn this immediately over to our county administrator, Anthony Genova. We have a special program for this month's celebration. We have some honorees here tonight, so Anthony, it is all yours.
Thank you, Commissioner James. We just have a couple of other things that we need to do. The announcement of the Open Public Meetings Act, we should do that.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been specified, I'm sorry, has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting and updated at the August 10th meeting with resolution number R-2021-0724 filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Okay. Please stand for the invocation.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants. Our county commissioners in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Can we please also have a moment of silence to those who gave their life and service to our country? Thank you. Back to you, Anthony.
We'll go back to the other items on the agendas, but first we'll start with our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. We have four honorees here this evening. I don't know who's starting here. Commissioner Opter is going to make a presentation to Council President Maritza Davila, the great city of Patterson. Congratulations, Council President.
Thank you so much, Council President, for being here, and thank you for everybody for being here. This is actually our first in-person meeting since the pandemic started, and so it is great that everybody could join us together socially distanced, and especially, you know, we were used to having these celebrations regularly, and so I'm grateful that we can honor our Hispanic community, but especially our Council President in the city of Patterson, where I'm proud to live, who I have known, you know, we both became elected officials, but we knew each other before, and we were both in, you know, public-type roles and trying to help people. And Maritza Davila is somebody I know regardless of title, regardless of, you know, whether she has quote-unquote "authority" or not, she's going to try to help people. She's going to try to serve people, and we're grateful that you work with us, and you've always been there and willing to work with us. We agree, disagree, but we've always been there, and this honor is long overdue. So, thank you for being with us. Let me just read here from the proclamation. "Whereas the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th, 2021, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of County Commissioners deems it fitting and appropriate this time to honor and recognize Maritza Davila. Whereas Maritza Davila, being of Puerto Rican and Peruvian descent, was born in the city of Patterson in 1971, where she's been a lifelong resident and currently holds a seat as a Patterson City Council President. And whereas Maritza Davila obtained her Bachelor of Arts in Communications from Monmouth University and her Master's in Administration of Science from Fairleigh Dickinson University and currently serves as the Assistant Director of Admissions at Passaic County Community College. And whereas Maritza Davila is a member of the New Jersey Education Association, the Passaic County Schools Counsel Association, the New Jersey Association for College Admissions Counseling, the Women Empowered Democratic Organization, served as a former Chairwoman of Friends of Passaic County Parks, and serves as a Democratic County Committee Member for her district. And whereas Maritza Davila has received numerous awards and recognitions, including the International Woman Award for Hispanic Day Parade of New Jersey, the Martin Luther King Jr. Elected Officials Award from Patterson Youth Council, the Women of Power Award from Alakan TV Show, the 2018 Team Hope Community Service Award, the Women of Excellence Award from Assemblywoman Shavon Sumter, the Keeping the Dream Alive, Making a Difference Award from National Action Network and Jump Start, the Shirley Chisholm Award from former Assemblywoman and current Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver, Senator Nellie Pose Trailblazer Women's Award, and many, many more. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic that publicly honors and recognizes Maritza Davila for her many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latino communities." Congratulations.
Thank you.
And let me also recognize one fact, which I just learned, you know, you educated me a couple weeks ago, that Maritza is the first Hispanic woman to ever serve, to my knowledge and to her, as a councilwoman at large for the city of Patterson. A great accomplishment. And let me also thank you on behalf of the county for your services and employee at Passaic County Community College. Whenever I'm at events, you know, oftentimes at fairs, different things, I see you there for the college, and I appreciate it, and our students appreciate it, and you've been there for the growth of our college, and we're very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Please.
I want to say thank you, thank you to God first and foremost. Thank you to all of the county commissioners, to my colleagues who are here, to everyone and all the honorees. I'm humbled, and I'll say that. I normally do not do things thinking that I should get recognized or doing something for something to come back my way. As you said, Commissioner Opter, it is true. I've been working for many, many years, 28 years to be exact, at Passaic County Community College, and when you talk about growth, I was 22 when I started, and there were 2,300 students at Passaic County College. Today we have over 11,000, and with many programs, and I'm just humbled and I thank everyone for giving me the opportunity, especially, you know, Dr. Rolls, who's not here, who's the president of the institution. He saw something in me. He says, "When I walked in through the door for that second interview," he says, "This is the person I want to be the head and lead in terms of recruitment for the college." And years later, he said, "Make sure, got to go back to school and get that second degree if you want another promotion," and 10 years later, I did it. But with that said, you know, I'm just thankful. I'm thankful for my community in the city of Patterson. This is what I know, what I love, and what I was taught to do. And I just want to say thank you. My son doesn't really like these things. My parents in heaven, I thank you as well, because it is because of them who I am. So, thank you all, God bless you all. Thank you.
You want to do now, or are we going to wait for it? We're going to wait today. Yeah, Neil, please.
Thank you. Thank you once again. Thank you.
Next, I'm going to call up to the podium with Fraila Lazara. You can stay there, but I'm going to ask Councilwoman Lauren Murphy from the city of Clifton, who is also a member of the Board of St. Peter's Haven, to introduce our next honoree.
And if Gustavo could come up to the podium, please.
Well, Gustavo, that's a tough act to follow, I know, but the things you do are so important to so many people. Gustavo was born and raised in Mexico City. He's the oldest of one sister and two brothers, and currently happily married, I'm going to start crying as usual, and the proud father of two children. He's a Clifton resident since 2015, which is when he started to work for St. Peter's Haven. And in 2019, he was promoted, the opening came up, and what's your title now? Manager?
I'm the country manager.
Country manager. Okay. Gustavo is a very hard-working person whose time and energy is devoted to improving the effectiveness of the community and the quality of life, so much that during the pandemic, he never closed the doors of St. Peter's Haven. And unfortunately, during that time, he contracted COVID because he was right out there on the front lines, but he's good now. Right now, St. Peter's Haven serves 1,300 individuals and 500 families, and they open their doors Wednesday and Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And if you ever want to be a volunteer, they love for people to come volunteer on Tuesday morning to get the packages ready for Wednesday and Thursday. So, it's my pleasure to be, it's my honor to present Gustavo O'Rallis.
Thank you.
That was really nice, Councilwoman Murphy. Gustavo, it's my pleasure to meet you, and after everything the councilwoman has said about you, you know, I don't say this often, but you do God's work. It's so true. And we have a proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners that I would like to read, and...
It's an honor to me.
Yes. So, "Whereas the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America are celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2021, through October 15th, 2021, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of County Commissioners deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Gustavo O'Rallis. Whereas Gustavo O'Rallis, a resident of the city of Clifton, was born and raised in Mexico City, he is the oldest of three siblings and is a proud husband and father of two. Whereas Gustavo O'Rallis is working for St. Peter's Haven, a nonprofit organization on a mission to provide food and shelter to families and individuals in need. And whereas Gustavo O'Rallis is a hard-working person whose time and energy is devoted to improving the effectiveness and quality of life for local communities. And whereas Gustavo O'Rallis continued to tend work to keep the doors of St. Peter's Haven open throughout the pandemic to be of service to those in need. So now therefore let it be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes Gustavo O'Rallis for the many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latino communities." Congratulations.
Thank you. It's okay. It's okay.
We're going to take a picture. Come on. Over here. Oh, yeah, you do. Come on.
Hello. Good evening to everyone. Thank you. It's an honor to me to be here. I want to say thank you to the Passaic County Commissioners for this recognition of my work. I want to say that the doors of St. Peter's Haven are always open for everybody in need, so we provide food and we provide a shelter for everybody who is in need of anything that they need. We also provide them, we refer them to another organizations, so the doors are always open. Like Commissioner Lauren Murphy, she invites everybody to come and help us to keep going this project, this organization, to keep feeding more families and help more people in need. Thank you very much.
We're going to take a picture. Come on, you guys.
All right. Commissioner Bartlett, we're going to go a little bit out of order.
Oh, jeez. He threw me off.
Where is he? Oh, he is back there. We were going to skip over because we didn't see you hiding back there, Mayor Laura. Welcome. So, I'm going to ask Mayor Laura to join Commissioner Lazara up at the podium for our, to introduce our next honoree.
Good morning. Good afternoon, Mayor.
And if Joanna could come, please come up to the podium.
So, I'm going to let Mayor Laura open this up and speak, and then we'll have me do this proclamation. And then Joanna.
Sure. Hello, everyone. So, I know that the commitment of Commissioner Lazara, along with the entire county commissioners in terms of those who are often found in the most vulnerable of situations, our homeless population, is to make sure that they always receive the necessary services to ensure, especially during times of great difficulties and adversities, that they would be okay. Whether it's a storm, ensuring, and I know that Commissioner Lazara always pushed at the forefront of this to ensure that codes were called to secure the shelter for each and every one of those individuals, as well as throughout the years, making sure that programs that provided food, shelter, and those essential wraparound services needed were at the forefront. When the commissioners reached out about Hispanic Heritage Month, especially Commissioner Lazara, and obviously on behalf of all of the commissioners, they were adamant that they wanted to highlight a member of the community that truly embodied the same principles and values that this board has set forth for many, many years. And Joanna was just such a remarkable candidate. Her commitment to our homeless population, not just in the city of Passaic, but throughout the entire county, has resulted, and I can make a very long list of everything that she's done, but very specifically to highlight her heart and her efforts, has resulted in multiple individuals. I believe you're up to six now?
Eight.
Eight! Look at that. She probably did two just today on the way here. Eight individuals, let me tell you what those eight individuals have received. She literally got them off the streets, connected with services, and into permanent housing in specific apartments. You know, it's one thing, and I think it's amazing and wonderful, and I remember when Commissioner Lazara and myself went down to Dundee Island, the amazing, remarkable jewel of the county. Thank you, county commissioners. I know you take care of the parks throughout the entire county, but we went down there, and Commissioner Lazara had spoken to individuals that were homeless in person, people that were concerned that they would be displaced, where would they go when these parks were being renovated, and then she went to Dignity House, and we ended up being on a live, and she was there asking, "How can we assist to ensure that each and every one of the individuals that come here receive services?" Well, champions like Joanna, who were so instrumental making sure that we had mailboxes for homeless individuals in order to receive correspondence, in order to ensure that if they were receiving benefits from federal government or the state, or families were looking for them, they would have a place to receive this mail, and this became so important in order to get them off the street. So, throughout the year, again, I'll reiterate, her efforts, her heart, her commitment to the homeless population resulted in getting people off of the streets, and it was so important to her because she knows the commitment of the county, especially all of the commissioners, and I know the commissioners who have worked so closely with human services, like Commissioner Lazara and Commissioner James, and most especially, obviously, Commissioner Bartlett and Commissioner Akbar Assad Opter. It is just, and all the commissioners, of course, all of you guys, but it was so very special to them to be able to be highlighted in terms of their work. When I say to be highlighted, it was the city of Passaic, Dignity House, and all of the staff to highlight the commissioners and Ms. Joanna Sisneros. So, once again, eight individuals now have an actual place to live. They went from the streets to permanent housing, wraparound services, assistance with utilities, and food every week. So, I just want to commend Commissioner Lazara in acknowledging a resident of Passaic who has lined up with the vision of this remarkable and most amazing Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Laura. I know the work that Joanna does is right in your heart, because I know that's very important to you, too. Joanna, I am going to read this, and I know I said just a few minutes ago that I hardly ever say this, but I will say it again, "You do God's work, and we need more people like you, because it's amazing what you do." So, I am going to have the privilege of reading this proclamation. "Whereas the county of Passaic, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America is celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th, 2021, through October 15th, 2021, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional Hispanics over the years, the Board of County Commissioners deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Joanna Sisneros." Did I say that right? Good. My grandmother's name was Joanna. "Whereas Joanna Sisneros, a resident of the city of Passaic, who has been a longtime volunteer at Goodwill, a center for people in need, has devoted her time, skills, and passion to help those in need for the past 18 years. Whereas Joanna Sisneros is currently an advocate for the homeless, where she connects those in need to community resources, allowing them to obtain permanent housing, living essentials, medical help, and even going as far as connecting the homeless to their estranged family members. And whereas Joanna often helps those who are homeless obtain new and lost identification and documents, which remains an obstacle for those in need, having access to necessities to get out of homelessness. Joanna volunteers with numerous nonprofits throughout Passaic County, and she currently serves as a volunteer in charge of operating the food pantry at the River Drive residence at the Passaic-Clifton Community Center, formerly known as the YMCA of Passaic, which serves approximately 100 residents. Whereas Joanna is a loving, caring, devoted, and passionate individual who finds balance in her everyday work in keeping her mind and perspective in place by enjoying quality time with her three-year-old daughter, who also often volunteers with her mom." That's great. "Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes Joanna Sisneros for her many years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latino communities." Thank you so much for what you do.
Do you want to talk about that?
Okay. I just want to think and share this with everybody that brings me the resources, including the mayor. Everybody deserves this. Everybody, the commissioners, our human services at Passaic, in Patterson and Clifton, everybody that helps me. We're all a team. It takes the village to raise a child. A homeless individual is like a child just being raised to be on their own again, and thank you. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll ask Commissioner Bartlett to step down, and, oop, I'm sorry, we're going to take a picture first. Okay. I would ask you to please come to the podium.
Adriana, please come on up and bring your team as well, if you'd like. I so appreciate the fact, and I know that our Patterson council members have to leave to get to their own meeting, so I appreciate their being here. You know, we talk about Hispanic Heritage Month, and there tends to be the shorthand of talking about the Hispanic community, but the truth is, the truth of it is, and we've seen it just here this evening, is that it's better to speak of Hispanic communities. I mean, just among our honorees, we have folks with backgrounds in Peru and Puerto Rico, Mexico, Dominican Republic. It is, the Hispanic community is a huge selection of Hispanic communities, and as a result, I think the communities, Adriana and some of the individual members, face a pair of challenges. One is connecting with one another, and the next, of course, is connecting with the wider U.S. society that they're a part of, across barriers of language and immigration and everything else. And that's why it's so important when we have organizations that help individuals, help business owners, help families make those connections, both within and beyond their community. And Adriana, that's why it's such a privilege for me to have the opportunity to recognize the Hispanic Star New Jersey Hub. And for those of you who haven't heard of the hub yet, you're going to hear a little bit about them as I read the relevant whereas clauses from our proclamation here. "Whereas the Hispanic Star New Jersey Hub seeks to unify Hispanic leaders to facilitate local and national collective action that enables the upward mobility of the Hispanic community. And whereas the hub is on a mission to elevate Hispanic collaboration, perception, and representation, and mobilize corporate America to leverage opportunities in the Hispanic community. And whereas the hub is focused on corporate American activation through the Hispanic Promise and the upcoming Hispanic Leadership Summit to ensure quality education for the Hispanic community, promote better jobs and equal opportunities. And whereas the hub pivoted its efforts to help the New Jersey community at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, where the company paid one month of rent to four small businesses in three different counties, including Passaic County, and in August partnered with different organizations, including the Passaic County Workforce Development Board, the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, and the Small Business, the SBDC of New Jersey, to conduct a series of webinars that provided information to small businesses on how to apply for all those emergency grants that we heard of and that so many businesses took advantage of last year. That's not all in here, don't worry. And whereas the Hispanic Star New Jersey Hub distributed hygiene products from Procter and Gamble to different organizations across New Jersey, including St. Joseph's Hospital, boxes of chocolates to Ava's Village in Patterson, and 320,000 protective masks to communities throughout New Jersey, helping a total of 28 organizations in 17 towns spread across eight counties. Now, with all that accomplished in just the past... local and national collective action that enables the upward mobility of the Hispanic community. And whereas the hub is on a mission to elevate Hispanic collaboration, perception, and representation, and mobilize corporate America to leverage opportunities in the Hispanic community. And whereas the hub is focused on corporate American activation through the Hispanic Promise and the upcoming Hispanic Leadership Summit to ensure quality education for the Hispanic community, promote better jobs and equal opportunities. And whereas the hub pivoted its efforts to help the New Jersey community at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, where the company paid one month of rent to four small businesses in three different counties, including Passaic County, and in August partnered with different organizations, including the Passaic County Workforce Development Board, the New Jersey Chamber of Commerce, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, and the SBDC of New Jersey, to conduct a series of webinars that provided information to small businesses on how to apply for all those emergency grants that we heard of and that so many businesses took advantage of last year. That's not all in here, don't worry. And whereas the Hispanic Star New Jersey Hub distributed hygiene products from Procter and Gamble to different organizations across New Jersey, including St. Joseph's Hospital, boxes of chocolates to Ava's Village in Patterson, and 320,000 protective masks to communities throughout New Jersey, helping a total of 28 organizations in 17 towns spread across eight counties. Now, with all that accomplished in just the past 18 months, therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Passaic publicly honors and recognizes the Hispanic Star New Jersey Hub for years of work and service in bringing community resources, culture, and information to the Passaic County Hispanic and Latino communities. Adriana?
Thank you so much. And yes, we are the representation of Hispanic Star. We did all this work in 18 months, but we cannot do it unless we have organizations that help. As you mentioned, there are as many organizations. So definitely I want to connect with you and with other people that we can continue helping our community, helping the ones that are in need. We have the opportunity to have the help of companies like B&amp;G and big companies like this that give us resources. So once that we have the resources, we just need the connections to be able to help. So definitely, as the previous person mentioned, we need to work together, and we can do a lot more for our communities. And thank you so much for this recognition.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Mayor Laura, we have a couple of empty chairs up here, if you want to bring back old times. Director, for expediency's sake, we skipped over approval of the minutes letter F on the agenda. I don't believe there's any proclamation approved, so.
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of September 8th, 2021.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Apter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Duffy. Lazara. Deputy Director James. Director Lapour.
Yes. There are no proclamations for approval, and the four honorees will be memorialized at the next meeting. Okay, next we have the update on Passaic County's response to COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Ariselli Pencil. I am the coordinator of Community Health Services in the county. I'm here today with Patrick Anderson, who is our epidemiologist. So the updates for Passaic County are the following. Today, we are on day 566 of the COVID-19 pandemic. From our last meeting, we have had a total of 1,786 additional cases, putting us at a total of 71,358 total cases for Passaic County. Of these cases that have been more recent, we know that these cases are 99.3% from the Delta variant. Four total deaths. We're at a total of 1,781. From our last meeting, we've had an additional 17 for Passaic County. Our cumulative hospitalizations are at 7,158, and our COVID positivity rate is at 5.50%. So it's actually gone down from the last meeting. Our multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children remains at 18 total cases. This number has gone unchanged since May 2021. In this slide, we could see the confirmed cases for Passaic County. On the left side, you will see all of our cases from March 2020 to current. On the right side, you would see the last three months regarding our cases for the county from June 27th to September 27th. And we could see that there has been an increase since June 27th. We saw an increase, definitely much higher in the time of August, and of course, some drops. But again, we have seen some additional cases in our different municipalities, and we'll show you further on. This is our percent positivity, our seven-day average. Again, we could see an increase between the months of June 24th to September 24th. In this slide, you could see the municipalities and how they're also being affected with COVID-19 cases. So you could see them individually. And throughout the county, we could noticeably see that we have four municipalities that have a higher amount of cases. So this would be the cities of Clifton, City of Passaic, City of Patterson, and Wayne Township. So the Passaic County Department of Health Services, we have been active in the community. We have been providing vaccinations. We currently host J&amp;J, Moderna, and Pfizer vaccinations. So we are working with our different partners in the community, trying to bring these vaccines to our residents. As of 9/28, we have administered a total of 61,044 doses. For first doses, we've done specifically Passaic County Department of Health Services, we've done 32,763. For second doses, we've done 28,246. And we've begun to administer third doses. So we've had a total of 35. And we're expecting this to be increasing as more and more people are eligible for the booster. So further on in the presentation, Patrick will inform you all of what that third booster eligibility consists of. For Passaic County, we have actually provided vaccinations to 54% females, 46% males, and the majority of our vaccinators, or people we've vaccinated, has been a total of 84%. And we have had some people who come out of the county to also be vaccinated. And this is usually when we're at the different municipalities. And you know, if we're offering to one municipality, we offer it to all who are interested in getting vaccinated. And this other slide, we have the vaccinations and just basically the tally of what we've done in our other municipalities. So as you could see, we've been to mostly all of them, providing our services. Here we have our vaccinations that have been administered by our department. Again, you could see the differences between the race and the ethnic group. So we have provided our services to 20% Hispanic or Latino, 58% not Hispanic. And we do have continuous work to improve and increase our vaccination rates among our Black, African-American, and Asian populations. In this next slide, you could see the different locations we've been. We have been working with multiple businesses to provide vaccinations for employees and the community members that might be around the area. We've gone to 27 different businesses, provided 968 vaccinations total. For our homebound clinics, because we do go to our most vulnerable populations who cannot leave their home, we've done a total of 2,747. For our Passaic County jail, we've administered 182. And for our in-house clinic, which is every Tuesday and Thursday now, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., we've done 159. That's beginning in July 1st of 2021. Also, we've been active at Woodland Park. We've been to the farmer's market, St. Joseph's Safe Citizen Day. We participated there, where we had our public health nurses and RV. And also, we were active at the Passaic County Community College in Patterson, and we provided students with vaccines. So here you could see our department's services regarding vaccinations, beginning of 2020 and currently. As you could see, there was definitely a large request for these vaccines in the beginning. Seems to be dwindling down, but of course, by the data that we have seen previously, we could see that vaccinations are working. We could see that masks are working. We could see that social distancing is also one of our tools that we have, so we could improve the well-being of our community residents. And then here we have, again, our doses, our demand, from December 2020 to 9/28/2021. On the right side, you could see the consistency between June and September 2021 as well. And you could see the different vaccines that we've provided throughout that time, and the third booster beginning since August. This here is data provided from the New Jersey Department of Health Dashboard. So you could see for Passaic County, similar to our data, we have provided these vaccinations to our different populations, still needing, of course, improvement in the two populations that I previously stated. For the state of New Jersey and New Jersey sites, they have reported a total of 627,176 doses administered throughout the state. And then here, we could just see the comparison, a 28-day comparison from our municipalities. Many of them have been increasing their activity with vaccinations. We could see that there's been increases regarding the percentage of courses completed. Some of the cities that we have here in place, for example, Clifton, they were at 74% completion. This time around, they're at 77%. We have other towns similar to Patterson that was at 69, now currently at 74%. So these are just some of the examples, and they're 28-day comparison. And Patrick is going to talk about the updates regarding the booster.
Good evening, all. I'm happy to provide COVID-related updates from the past few weeks. So the Pfizer vaccine, to receive authorization to be administered to individuals no less than six months after the initial two-dose series. The initial series must be Pfizer, though. We're awaiting more data to be submitted for both Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson, on whether or not that approval will be granted. The following are the eligible groups to receive the booster dose. So people 65 years and older and residents in long-term care facilities should receive a booster dose. People 50 to 64 years of age with underlying medical conditions. And some of these may include cancer, chronic lung diseases such as COPD, asthma, cystic fibrosis, dementia, other neuroconditions, diabetes type 1 and 2, Down Syndrome, smoking, obesity. So these are an example of some of the medical conditions that would qualify you. People aged 18 to 49 with the same sort of conditions. And also people aged 18 to 64 who are at increased risk for COVID-19 exposure and transmission because of their occupation or their setting. A few days ago, Governor Murphy signed Executive Order 264, which necessitates that all childcare center personnel be fully vaccinated by November 1st, or will have to be tested at minimum once per week. Related to childcare centers, all employees, visitors, students, and children, each 2 or over, must wear face masks indoors. And there are a few exceptions to this mandate. It's another reminder, on October 18th, two mandates will go into effect. All workers in preschools through grade 12 schools will be required to be fully vaccinated or subjected to testing. And the same will be in place for workers, state agencies, authorities, and colleges and universities. So the Docket app on smartphones is a resource that provides users with access to their COVID vaccination records electronically. If an error does exist, please submit a ticket on NJIIS nj.gov to resolve that. We have a number of upcoming COVID-19 vaccine clinics. We list them here. We continue to host vaccine clinics on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. And we now offer three brands of the vaccine authorized in the United States at our Totoa Clinic on Riverview Drive. And we continue to offer vaccines to homebound residents at their requests. We have an upcoming clinic at Carefinders in Passaic City. The date listed, the Woodland Park Farmer's Market, once again, in October, Paws and Parks in Hawthorne. We also have received flu vaccines for this year's flu season. Receiving your flu vaccine is a powerful defense against falling ill from the flu. So we will host a number of flu clinics as described here. With a number of vaccines available, we encourage all to get vaccinated, protect themselves, their families, and communities from severe illness and death. Thank you.
Docket hasn't been able to resolve something since August 14th. And so I deal with the state weekly. They can't get it out of their own way. It's absolutely inaccurate information, and they want us to use this as a, you know, proof that we got a vaccine, when they can't get an accurate thing on there. And so I say, submit something? I have several times now. And the last time that the state called me, we're going to give you Docket, we're going to put you on hold, you're going to speak to somebody, and a half hour later, I hung up, because they didn't pick up. So I'm not real thrilled about Docket, and they don't seem to be doing what they're supposed to do. And I'm getting that from people in your office. And I'm getting that from people in your office and from people who are dealing with them who have nothing to do with Passaic County. So if the state doesn't get it together, that's their contract. They should be holding these people at least some kind of responsibility for getting it right. You know, what I do now, I just take a picture of my card that you guys gave me, and that's what I use.
And that's what we recommended in the beginning.
I mean, why would I use Docket? It's not accurate.
Yeah, that's what we recommended in the beginning. Make sure to take a picture again because we wouldn't know how the situation would evolve with time. As you mentioned, Docket has been giving a few issues, and not only here for, for in the Totala area, Passaic County area, but obviously all New Jersey. So that's something, again, that the state would have to work together.
I just hope they correct it. I mean, they want everybody to use it. We're probably paying some pretty good tax dollars to that company, but they should get it right, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't know how to resolve it. I just don't know how to resolve it. Apparently, I can't. So.
I saw the town-by-town breakdown. I'm sure I missed it. But what is our Passaic County vaccination rate at this point?
Passaic County vaccination rate?
Total Passaic County. Do we have that? I saw the town-by-town breakdown.
Yeah, so that's in excess of eighty percent right now.
For one shot or two?
The county as a whole.
No, no, is that for those who had one shot or those who have both?
Oh, both shots.
Or those who have a complete court?
Yep, so fully vaccinated. And the data that's provided on the dashboard, so it's only showing the eighteen-plus population. And something that we've addressed the state, but we're still not getting much resolved, is that it's not inclusive of the twelve-to-seventeen-year-old population that's eligible.
It's eighty percent of those eighteen and older.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you keep, I'm glad you guys keep accurate records.
Can I just ask you one thing to clarify?
Yes.
The booster shots, are we giving them for Moderna and J&amp;J?
Not.
Sure. Sure. So the booster shots are authorized for Pfizer. For those that don't have moderate to severe immunocompromisedation, they're only, if they had Pfizer as their primary series, they should get Pfizer as their booster shot. If somebody's immunocompromised moderately to severe, they may receive Moderna, but only if they fall in that category of moderately severely immunocompromised.
So we haven't released the Moderna and J&amp;J booster shots yet?
That's right. That's right.
Thank you.
If that comes off of the emergency authorization, then that'll be offered too. That's what's totally get operated, CDC and their.
That's exactly right.
I want to be sure that I understood the last thing you said. Because my understanding is the only booster shots that are being given are Pfizer. What I just heard you say is that severely, moderately severely immunocompromised person whose original run was Moderna, now got a Moderna booster? Did I hear you correctly?
So they use, the terms are a bit kind of finicky. So they use the term "third dose." It's not interchangeable with the term "booster." Sure, the terminology is confusing, but so moderately to severely immunocompromised, if they have a liver transplant or undergoing active chemotherapy and their primary series was Moderna, they can get that third dose, and that could be Moderna. For those that, to deal with waning immune system and immune waning efficacy, their primary series must be Pfizer to receive the Pfizer booster.
Is there, so two follow-up questions. The first one is, relative to what we know about the number of people in Passaic County's population that got Pfizer for their original run versus Moderna, which is mostly what we were doing over the course of the first half of this year, how many people might be eligible? How many Passaic County residents might be eligible for Pfizer booster shots? And what does that tell us about whether we need to be doing more clinics and booster shot availability? It's my first follow-up. My second follow-up is, is there any, is there any anticipation or timetable with respect to when a Moderna booster or a more broadly available Moderna third dose is going to be permitted or encouraged by the CDC?
Sure. So we have a hard time ascertaining the dose brand for those who got vaccinated in Passaic County by manufacturer. We've been told that the expectation is that about one hundred thousand residents will be eligible for the combined Moderna and Pfizer. For Pfizer alone, we're not quite sure yet, but that's some information that we received from the state. The eligibility for a combined Pfizer and Moderna seems to be about one hundred thousand individuals. And it's, in terms of timeline, we keep being told that it's, we're expecting to hear from a, you know, the data review. And the same goes for authorizations for those individuals that are under twelve for certain brands. So we keep pressing for more information, but we're not receiving much, unfortunately. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. I know Dr. Gungil is probably watching at home, and I know she'd be proud of the job the two of you did in her absence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, unless one of the commissioners has a report to be prepared, I'm going to skip the commissioner reports. No objection?
All right. Sandy should talk about Paws in the Park once. Thanks.
The county is hosting Paws in the Park on October ninth. So from ten to four at Offalbrook Park in Hawthorne. Everybody's invited, and we're going to have a lot of, over seventy vendors there, so I hope you can make it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, moving on to, there's no communications. Take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
I'll move that.
Motion made by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call. County Commissioners, Octor Bartlett.
Yes.
Yes. Lazar. Deputy Director James. Director Lapore.
Yes.
Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward to the mic. You have, state your name and address. You have three minutes. And please be advised that all your remarks will be a matter of public record. Thank you.
Just please hold for one second. All right, just, okay. Okay. I found, I found it. Okay.
Hi, my name is Victor Wu. I am, I live at one seventy Pershing Road, Clifton, New Jersey. Mostly, almost a lifelong resident of Clifton. Dear county commissioners, at first, I wanted to just come and thank you for all of your continued support in allowing us to have cross-country at Garrett Mountain. As one of the original sites that's still being run on, all the coaches, athletes, and parents greatly appreciate all that you do in keeping Garrett Mountain suitable for competition. And having said that, I would also like to thank the Parks Department, specifically Marcela Braca and Joe Giuliano and their entire crew in cleaning up the park after the horrible storm that we had. The park was really washed out, and they did amazing work. That, the coaches, I'm also representing the state for the NJSIA High School State Championships as a meet director. The course hasn't looked this good in, I have to say, like, eight or ten years. And they put in quality work, and those people who do a lot of this thankless work should be recognized. And I thought the very least I can do as a county resident was to make sure that, you know, you're aware that your group of people are amazing. Finally, as the head timer for the Passaic County Cross Country Championships, I would also like to invite you to the county championships on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, at Garrett Mountain. More importantly, it'll be great if you guys can, and ladies, could come as the award presenters for the teams. It'll be great to really have you there, give out the medals and plaques for our county champions at the end of the meet. The meet starts at four o'clock, and the varsity races should be done by like five thirty. So somewhere around there, it'll be great to have you there to present awards at Garrett Mountain. And hopefully, it'll be a nice day as well. And again, thank you for all that you do for us as a county resident.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Commissioner Corey Teague from the Patterson Board of Education. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Shell Jackson. I received some news earlier about the officer that was at the scene in January of twenty eighteen, who basically sat in his car, didn't do anything, and bragged later on about what took place. And, you know, I'm hearing that he was promoted to chief, if I'm not mistaken. And I just think that this particular officer should have came under more scrutiny. And quite frankly, he should not still be on the force today. What happened to Shell Jackson was inexcusable, reprehensible. And, you know, I believe that there should have been much more of an effort to protect her that night, and there was absolutely no effort to do so. So, you know, I'm asking you all to please rehash this situation, look into it as many times as you need to, and really ask yourselves, is this the right decision to allow him to continue to be promoted and to continue to get more taxpayer money while he failed to do the one thing that he swore to do, and that was to protect and serve the residents of Passaic County? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Teague. Anybody else in the public wishing to be heard?
Good evening, commissioners. I am here in support of Tishell Jackson and her journey to receive justice. Captain Atkins watched in his cozy little cop car cruiser as Ms. Jackson was shot point-blank in the passenger seat of her own vehicle. On January third, two thousand eighteen, he watched as Ms. Jackson dragged herself out of her car, had to crawl as she was bleeding out, beg him, and knock on his door to get the help that she deserved as he sat there and watched. How is it that he got two promotions since that incident as he clearly displayed negligence and incompetence on his job? These police officers are a disease to this city. They will infect the whole department, and it will cost the lives of hundreds in the city who do not deserve it. These cops don't even live in our city. They're from out of town, and they treat us like less than human. And the only people that, and the people that suffer the most are the youth. I come here and I speak on behalf of the youth because we're tired. We scream all day. We watch as our friends, our cousins, our brothers are killed by police negligence in this city. So on behalf of Tishell Jackson and the youth of the city, please look into this issue again. There's no reason why he should still be working. Thank you so much for your time.
Ma'am, your name for the record, please.
My name is Kenya Banister.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
Good evening, everyone. This is Chairman, Commissioners, members of the public. My name is Mike Jackson. I'm a resident of the city of Patterson and care to, just to back up some of the information that the young lady has passed along. We didn't have an opportunity to really put something together, but we will. We are. We're demanding and expecting you guys to be diligent. This young lady has endured some great challenges that you all are aware of. In fact, over twenty-one months ago, we came here and we gave you guys a video that outlined exactly what she experienced. It's very disappointing to me, you know, some of you who campaigned in our communities, some of you who came out and openly talked about the making a change in the crime rate and the violence, and to sit here and see what this young lady had to experience. And the fact that you guys are still forcing someone who is having extreme challenges. The last time she was here, the reason why we kind of just want to keep this a little mellow is several days after she was here, she sustained, you know, some additional medical issues due to, you know, some compromising issues due to, as a result of what she experienced. So, you know, it's puzzling to me that you guys are still here and not actually moving on a result for Ms. Jackson. And, you know, I want to be clear, because I understand, you know, even just to back up some of the information that Kenya spoke about, I don't, I don't have any ill feelings or malice towards the officer. It's not the officer's fault to the extent of where he failed to act. The fact is, the officer lacked the experience to be in that position. So when that moment came about, when his job was on the line, when her life was on the line, and it was his job to protect and serve, he failed to act because he didn't have the experience. He didn't have the training. So, and that speaks right back to you guys. You guys are the people who we put in place to oversee the operations of our county government. And the fact that the sheriff put someone in that position who lacked the experience, and it showed, because when that moment happens, what if that was one of your family members? What if that was your daughter, of your wife, who was in that, who was in that, in that hideous moment of almost seconds from losing her life? So I don't want to labor this too long. A lot of you know who I am and how I stand firmly for the community. The next time, I'm expecting that we're going to come a little bit heavier because we had to allow for an outside agency to do it, to do an investigation, and none of you are going to be happy with the results of that investigation. So I'm asking you guys to do what you promised our communities to do, all of you. All of you, campaigning in Patterson, all of you. Madam Chairwoman, I helped your campaign one year in Grace Chapel Parking Lot, right on the streets of North Main and Eldon Avenue. You know, these areas are being, you know, compromised by violence, and we should not have an irresponsible person in office that's putting people on the road that don't have the experience to protect our community. But even when it happens, where are you guys now in the aftermath of that? Why are we still forcing this young lady who has had some challenges and who can't afford to continue to pay legal fees? Why are we still forcing her to litigate? That's the question today. So I'm hoping that we'll hear from you guys. I myself presented the video to all of you, and the video is hideous. And we will begin to repost it and start tagging and posting some of you guys there because you guys have not been responsible in the last two years since this incident has happened. I appreciate you guys giving me some time, and I'm hoping to hear from some of you and hear some progress and what we plan to do to help Ms. Jackson's condition or circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Does anyone else want to be heard in the public? Before you speak and for all, everyone in the chamber here that's going to speak during public portion, modern technology is taking over here, so you'll see like a little red light blink there, and that'll tell you that your three minutes have gone beyond it. I didn't realize that until I was watching the councilman speak, and I went, there's a light going off over there. So please be aware of the light. I appreciate it. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Alexandra Smith, and my address is, I have to state that out loud. Okay, Fifty-Six Loon Terrace, Clifton, New Jersey. So as well as the councilman in Kenya, I'm here today to speak on Ms. Jackson's, not on behalf, but in support and solidarity for her. And I see that a lot of you guys are not able to necessarily have the same life experiences to understand what it's like to be dismissed and treated differently because of your skin color. But I think it's really important that we acknowledge that one of the most important things after watching that video is being able to say that you can empathize with Ms. Jackson and to understand what it must feel like to be. Jackson and to understand what it must feel like to be shot five times, and to look over to the officer who was standing there, sitting in his car, safe, while your boyfriend, who you've just broken up with, tries to kill you. She had to get up after being shot five times and walk over to his vehicle. I know it must be difficult to emphasize for this incident, and me personally, I'm not sure that I could confidently say that I don't hold the officer accountable for his own actions, because we don't want cowards for chiefs, for captains. That's not someone I would feel safe serving and protecting. If I was to move to Patterson, I wouldn't feel protected by this cop who was unable to continue his duty and act on behalf of serving and protecting the people of his town. And I realize that this would be a long battle, because it should have been after this happened. That's not okay. Anybody who watched that video was able to say, why is he in his car? Why is he not helping her? Those are questions I cannot answer today. I doubt any of you guys can answer them confidently. But it is really disappointing to see just everybody looking around, unable to really listen and hear and understand. But yeah, like he said, we'll be back.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who shouldn't be heard?
Yeah, hello. My name is John Luke Kabuzio. My address is 114 Clifton Avenue, Clifton, New Jersey. Four, five times, doesn't matter, even if she was shot once, even if the cop just saw a gun, he should have gotten out of his car. The fact of the matter is, when you put someone inexperienced, unqualified, and someone who isn't from our community, who doesn't seem to care, in a situation where they choose their life, they risk their own safety over a citizen's, and they choose their own, and on top of it, they defend them? The city is defending him. They promote him to chief? They promote him to chief? It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous, and it's really upsetting. Like Councilman Jackson said, if you put yourself into Ms. Jackson's mother's situation, she finds out that her daughter has been shot and beaten with the back of a gun, and a police officer was there on scene before the scene even occurred. He couldn't handle that. He couldn't handle that. And then on top of it, when they questioned him of it, they, she's in the hospital for a year and a half, a year and a half recovering. They questioned him about it, he answers a couple of questions, he reads the report that he stated, oh, making excuses about why he couldn't get out of his car. When I can't follow the duties of my job, I will get fired. He can't meet the expectations that are expected of him as a police officer of this community, he should be fired. If he stands by watching someone get shot, he should be arrested.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who shouldn't be heard?
Good evening. My name is Atif Coleman, and I am a new resident here at Patterson. And he should be fired for what he witnessed. And tonight was the first night I happened to see the video of Ms. Jackson, and it mustered up enough energy for me to come up here and speak to you guys. I'm not too familiar with the Freeholders Board. I am getting familiarized with New Jersey. But what I will tell you is, is that that video is horrific. And we know that Patterson has become what it has allowed for years. And you guys are enabling it by doing nothing. And then on top of it, you're promoting him. I get in the elevator to come to the meeting. His face is unplastered all over the elevators with this big grin after he watched a woman get slaughtered. You know, I see some of these last names. You know, I come from New York, Westchester County, and I grew up in an era where it was just African Americans and Italians. And it was right or wrong, black or white, everyone knew each other, they had respect for one another. But we're in a different community now. But I see some of the names and the faces up here, and you guys come from that era. You know right from wrong. You know what he did was wrong. And you're rewarding bad behavior by allowing him to become a celebrity, police officer. After we hired him, put him in uniform to protect us, he did the total opposite and allowed a woman to get slaughtered. Thank God she's alive. I just can't get that video out of my head. I just, I can't see how you guys sleep at night. How do you sleep? Knowing that you have the power to get rid of this guy or do something? But, you know, I got to tell you, something needs to happen here. Accountability is, is a missing link in this city. And you guys have the power to hold this man accountable. So I implore you, I humbly implore you, please, look at yourselves tonight when you go home and say to yourself, what should I do differently? Seriously, Cassandra, I want you to look at yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who shouldn't be heard?
Good evening. Valerie Freeman, 108 North 9th Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I'm going to express how I feel, and I'm just going to ask you a very simple question. Let's flip this whole thing. The video I saw was disgusting. The fact that he was rewarded to sit in his car disgusts me even more. So let's say it was a Caucasian woman, and she was being beaten, and she was being shot five times by her boyfriend, while an African American police officer sat in his car and watched. We would not be here. We would not be here, because said African American officer would be facing charges. Said African American officer would be on death's duty. Said African American officer would lose his job. He would lose his pension. He would lose it all if his skin was like mine. But the fact of the matter is, and that's how I feel, because she was an African American woman, and he was a Caucasian police officer, Sheriff's Department, it seems like it's okay. It seems as if Ms. Jackson's life didn't matter one bit to you, to him, to everyone who saw that video. If the said officer was African American, we wouldn't be here. And you can smirk, and you can say, oh, it's not a race thing. But growing up all my life in Patterson, in the Passaic County, I see it all too often. I see it all too often. So unless you can tell me something different as to why he was rewarded to a higher position without any experience, I'm going to continue to believe my theory of it. And if said young woman was a Caucasian young woman, we would not be here. The newspaper would be filled with said African American officer's face all over. And it wouldn't stop until justice was served. Until justice was served, he would be plastered on every newspaper and on every news station. But because said officer is Caucasian, that didn't happen, and it won't happen. And I'm disgusted at the fact that Ms. Jackson still has to deliberate on whether he should have gotten out of his car. He can't even give an excuse. Who gives excuses for why you can't get out of a car? A police officer to protect and serve. If I was on the scene, a regular citizen, I would have jumped out my car. I would have tried to help her. But not an officer who's paid well, he couldn't figure out what to do, or if he should get out of his car. So again, if said officer was African American, and if Tishell was Caucasian woman, we wouldn't be here. You guys saw the video. I was here when he gave it to you. I was here when he gave each and every one a copy of that video. And if you're okay with it, I pray to God that your daughter, mother, sister, cousin, aunt is ever put in a position like that. But if it was one of your relatives, we wouldn't be here.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public who shouldn't be heard? Okay, I'll take a motion to...
Second.
Made by Commissioner Octor. Second by Commissioner Bartlett. To close, roll call.
County Commissioner Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara. Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director, I'll just remind everyone that this matter is the subject of pending litigation. I don't think it's appropriate for anyone to comment at this point. Director, if I may, I have one amendment and one late starter. And if you can just humor me here, the amendment is to L16, the fifth paragraph. I want to strike the language and insert the following. Whereas the members of the board will personally review at a minimum the annual report of audit for calendar year 2020, and specifically the sections of the annual audit entitled "Comments and Recommendations," and execute the group affidavit form of the board. Paragraph seven, strike that language and insert the following. Whereas all members of the board will receive and familiarize themselves with at least the minimum requirements of the local finance board as stated afore said, and will subscribe to the affidavit as provided by the local finance board. And then finally, now therefore let it be resolved, strike that language and insert the following. Now therefore let it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic hereby states that it will comply with NJAC 5:30-6.5, and will hereby submit a certified copy of the resolution and the required affidavit to the local finance board to show evidence of said compliance. Those are the only amendments. And then the one late starter is L58, Resolution Authorizing an Appropriation for Vault Medical Services in New Jersey, PC, for the performance of administering COVID-19 vaccination booster shots in Passaic County, and authorizing Amendment Number Two of the Vaccine Administration Agreement pursuant to Section 5.3 of the Passaic County Administrative Code and NJSA 40A: 11-6. There is no need for executive session, and I would just remind all the commissioners that if you want anything taken off the consent agenda to make that motion through the...
Any questions for County Counsel?
Director, through you, I'd just have a comment. For those of you who signed the affidavit, you know, but this was the first year of my tenure here that there were no comments or recommendations in the audit, which makes signing the affidavit a lot easier. Really nothing to review, but I know he's not here, but I want to commend our CFO, Rich Cahill, and his staff for really doing a good job in a trying year, you know, during the COVID year and all of the CARES money coming in. So I think it's a real testament to Rich and his entire staff.
Excellent job, Rich. Okay, I'll take a motion to amend L16 and add L58 as a late starter.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bartlett. Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion on the consent agenda, L1 to L58, with amended L16.
I'll move that.
Moved by Commissioner Bartlett. Second by Commissioner, Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. And a new business. Have receipt of a filed supplemental debt statement filed by the CFO. Number two, Bond Ordinance 2021-06.
Bond Ordinance to authorize the construction of a new biotechnology facility for the vocational school in the County of Passaic, in, by, and for the County of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $24,737,301 to pay the cost thereof, to appropriate, I'm sorry, to appropriate a state grant to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
I'll take a motion to approve Bond Ordinance 2021-06 on first reading. Motion made by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlett. Any discussion? I just want to remind everyone, we need, I don't know, this is just first reading. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director, before you continue, there is some new business that County Commissioner Lazara would like to add.
Okay.
This past summer, we were lucky enough to employ a new veterans officer who has really taken the initiative to plan some veteran events. And he's doing it in conjunction, obviously, with the Board of Commissioners and Catholic Charities and our county clerk's office. I know our county clerk to the board, Lewinhoff, has worked very diligently on these initiatives. And I just wanted to let people know that we will have these flyers on our website. But just as an aside, we are having a Veteran Appreciation Day on Friday at Camp Hope. Our veterans are invited. We'll also be having a medal ceremony at the same time. Next, our veterans officer, who I guess I should say his name is Wilfredo Rodriguez, was a 20-year Navy veteran. He's, he has a Masters of Social Work, and he's a chaplain. He's going to be running support groups for veterans. It's called Vets Helping Vets, and it's going to be at our Senior Services Building in Totowa starting on October 19th. He has five sessions scheduled from 10 until 12. There will be lunch there also, and we would like to invite the veterans to come there and just, you know, have a support group that they can talk to and have conversation with. The third event that we are having here in the county is on October 29th, and it's from 8:30 to 1:30 in Wayne. It's at our Office of Emergency Management Building up on Oldham Road. And that's going to be a workshop for veterans, and it's called "Navigating Your Network of Support: Crisis to Wholeness." We are encouraging the veterans of Passaic County to please take a look at what we have to offer. Call Wilfredo, his number is 973-569-4090, and take part in these events that we feel is very important to bring to the veterans of Passaic County. And we hope to continue more of these as the time goes on. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion? Anybody else have anything? All right, I'll take a motion on personnel.
Move the personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy Director James. Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion on the bills.
Move the bills.
Motion made by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director, before you ask for an adjournment, just want to make sure for the record, according to our resolution that was adopted back in August 11th, it calls for no meeting on October 12th. So the next meeting of the Board of County Commissioners will be October 26, according to Resolution R-2021, I mean, 2021-724.
will be October 26th, according to Resolution R-2021, I mean, 2021-724.
Okay. And Director, before we close, I want to thank and commend our staff for making this room safe again. And I don't just mean that I'm safe from Bruce and Assad, but...
We're not safe from you, that's the problem.
Well, that's true. Until you commute my mic, you're not safe from me. But, um, this, this has been a long time coming. We were last here celebrating Women's History Month. March, it was right around my birthday, right around our birthday, March 10th, maybe, of 2020. So 18-plus months on, and we're back, and it's really good to be back.
I'm not crazy about this glass, because I hit my head twice on it. It doesn't give. Don't even go there. It's crazy. All right. If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bartlet, second by Commissioner Octor. Thank you. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Lazara.
Deputy Director James.
Director Lepore.
Yes.